As the mayor pro tem just noted, we have a 7:30 public hearing we've got to shoot over to right now because we were going through an item so we could finish that up. But we've got an item on the agenda, Mr. City Attorney, is that correct? So now we're going to have to move over to item number 15, as required by law. Andrew, that's the law, right?
Yeah.
Okay. So let's go to item number 15, it'll be heard at 7:30 per Elections Code 21607.1D. And again, this is for the council at home and people here, public hearing to receive public input regarding boundaries for South Pasadena City Council districts in first reading and introduction of an ordinance designating a city council election district map as required by the Elections Code.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, staff and members of the public. First, I want to know what parallel universe I'm in. There's no public comment in South Pasadena? What is going on in this world?
Can you hear you're coming tonight?
Yeah, maybe that was it. Get out of the way, here he comes. I'm happy to be here for your fourth public hearing on redistricting, the law requires you have at least four, so you'll meet that milestone today. And hopefully, we get through here. I will say just upfront, you have produced not just a lot, because there are some jurisdictions that produce a lot, but you've got a lot of quality maps to consider and review. Some of them are different than the others, but they're really, really good, solid inputs to this process that I think get at the communities that we're trying to represent, you're all trying to represent in this process. So I'm going to run through quickly some of the slides you've already seen, just because we do that in case there's members of the public who haven't seen it, and then we'll get right to the maps. This, as I've noted before, is the really critical slide. It really provides the rules of the road. Were it so simple that we could just draw maps and be done with it, that would be easy. The first thing to note is on the left-hand side, you'll see the federal requirements. The first bullet item there is equal population, which simply suggests that each district within a jurisdiction has to be approximately the same size. Over 10 years, people move in, people move out, cities next, they do all kinds of things, and it wouldn't be fair if districts were different sizes. And so you have to resize the districts as close to even as you can. Secondly, the Federal Voting Rights Act requires that you not create districts that dilute the potential for a protected class to become elected. It doesn't give you a percentage, it doesn't give you a number, it doesn't give you how, it simply says you can't be seen drawing a district that dilutes the potential for election. And then the third bullet there simply says sort of the inverse of that. While you can't dilute the potential, you also can't be seen circuitously going around to grab populations of protected classes to create a district, otherwise known as gerrymandering. We know that more commonly with political parties, but you can't do it in racial or linguistic contexts at all. So those are the foundational federal laws. Recently, in 2019, California added a layer on top of that, and I would add, this layer actually makes California law and redistricting far more restrictive than most other states in the country, if not all. It's a further set of requirements that you have to follow. So in addition to the first federal ones, you also have to create districts, and this is in order of priority, districts that are contiguous, they have to be touching to the extent practicable. They have to represent and try not to split neighborhoods or communities of interest. And now, as noted at our last hearing, this gets a little sticky. What is a neighborhood? What's a community of interest? And how do you do that if that imbalances equal population? And so sometimes you do have to split things, but you have to have the logic set about what you were trying to do and why you did it. And as noted, communities of interest can be defined by you, by the legislative body, as long as you're noting it in public record what you were trying to do and there's a significant logic there. The third is something that you can use, again, in the public record, you can use boundaries. You can say streets, you can say parks, you can say hills, any natural or person-made boundaries, again, as long as you call it out and say, "We are using this street." And that was the case, I believe, particularly in a couple of the districts here in South Pasadena. And the final one is compactness. There actually are mathematicians that can derive compactness. In general, really, it's one of those, you'll know it when you see it. You can't be seen having districts jump over one community to get to another, and again, circuitously go grab populations. None of the maps, the final maps that we've looked at, have any issues with, we believe, with the seven most fundamental issues. On the right-hand side, you'll see more traditional principles that are used. The one that's the most significant here, and it was called out in particular as it relates to housing, is you are allowed to under-populate a district if you're pretty sure in that permits are pulled, sticks on the ground, and you know that there's going to be growth, you can under-populate knowing in the next 10 years. And you talked about the housing requirement and all that. Those are the principles that were followed, and I think the mapmakers and the public, as well as you all, realize it can be complicated, but it also can be quite creative, and there's lots of different ways to cut this. Let me go to the next slide. That's the current council district. It should be noted that this was drawn before the Fair Maps Act. And so you clearly were trying to do something with the two districts in the center that, frankly, would probably have some issues with the Fair Maps Act as it relates to communities of interest or neighborhoods. When you drew this, it was perfectly legal. And so the issue is that we've been confronted with over the past couple of weeks is, how do you redraw this to maintain the essence of the city of South Pasadena? And also, a lot of comments, "We don't want to break it up, we want people to think about the city of the whole," all that's fair, but the Fair Maps Act requires that you have to also identify communities of interest and neighborhoods. So this is how you look today. Again, the numbers are the telling thing here, that we often focus on the top three rows. The total population shows that you are out of balance. You try and stay within 10%, not try, you need to stay within a 10% population deviation. That means between the largest district and the smallest, you can't have more than 10%. You're at 11.81. We try and stay south of 8.5 or so, but again, it's presumed to be okay from a population deviation under 10. I would say that the closer you are to zero doesn't make it a better map, it just means it's closer to population deviation. You may, zero, you may have a reason to be a little higher because you're trying to represent a community of interest or a neighborhood, and you know this exercise if you've tried to draw the maps. The next two lines, you can see the citizen voting age. By the way, I should note, this is total population. It's not citizens, it's not residents, it's old, it's young, it's everybody. You take the total population of 27020, you divide it by five, and that gets you your target of 5,404 people. That's your target for each district. You can also see the citizen voting age is important. You could presumably have a district that has a really high population, but a really young population, so they're not voting age. And that could drop that voting age population for a protected class precipitously, and someone could say that is diluting the potential for that class to get elected. That's why the voting age is important. The other items on this list, and there are more in your list and online, are designed to give you a lot more information about communities. The numbers about homeownership, about socioeconomic status, et cetera, et cetera, are all designed to just give you more things to consider when you're drawing maps. We are here. We are at March 16th. The deadline for the maps to submit was March 7th, so we've had some time to process. And as noted, you all asked us to renumber some maps to normalize that. We did that. It's a function of the drawing tool, but we tried to normalize it so the numbers looked good or consistent. It says there, you're going to consider potentially the first read of an ordinance. You do have a hard stop on April 17th, or your final official meeting, you can't do a special meeting for the second read of the ordinance, so whenever that is. April 6th is your final official full meeting. And so you don't have a lot of time, and so if there's a map today and it makes sense, we're going to see if we can get you all to the first reading of an ordinance. If not, there is time, but there's no reason to wait if you know what map makes sense. So let's get to the maps. As noted, you had a decided disinterest in even-numbered maps, so you'll see odd-numbered maps plus a few that were similar but adjusted. Map 101, again, the deviation here is 9.18, it's still presumed to be okay. You can see the hard dotted lines there are your previous map. You still have a couple of vertical issues here. District 5 certainly changes and goes much further up north, which pushes District 4 further west, and you have a horizontal there with 2. You can see in the bottom, we've added the potential election cycle here in each of the maps, and I apologize, there are different styles here, but you can see in these maps what we call pairing. Pairing simply means you have two council members, sitting council members, who are in one district at this point. At that point, the council members would run against each other if they're the same year. If they're different years, you get to pick, and then if it's the 2022 election, the 2024 waits it out, stays at large until 2024, and the 2022 person can run or not. In this one, clearly, Mayor Kachiyadi and Councilmember Mahmoud would run in the same district. Map 103A got a lot of attention last time. This one was edited from last time. You had 103, we made some adjustments. I believe the adjustments were more in District 3. And again, you can see, there's still that horizontal in District 3. At this point, 4 and 5 are separated the way it is more close like today. And in this instance, you see Councilmember Donovan and Mayor Pro Tem Primuth are in the same district, that would be District 3. Again, the population deviation is 8.05, still within bounds and still representing communities of interest based on the conversations that we've heard over the past couple of months. 105A, again, is a version of 105. Deviation is a little bit lower than the other one. In this case, each of the council members are in their own district. By the way, you don't start with that, that's a complete no-no. What you do try and do is you start with the federal law, the state law, and then to the extent that you can create a system where people are voting for somebody they've already voted for and keep people elected, you do that. But it's absolutely not done at the front, it's done clearly at the back end of the process. You can see the bulge out in the pink, that was 105 before, and there was a little line underneath that bulge, I believe that was problematic. What we did is we fixed that. District 1 became a lot more compact over in the west side. District 3 is a little bit more compact in that regard, and again, 4 and 5 are more traditional. There was an issue, I believe, Councilmembers Nymer about renters that was brought up, and you can see up on the northwest side, I think is what you called out, is in District 1 firmly. And I think there's some in District 3 in the south side, as well as District 5. Map 107, a significantly lower population deviation, again, doesn't make it better or worse, but you can see this is quite a different map. District 2 pushes up, and 3 pushes down. 5, again, takes all of the east side, rather, and pushes 4. This looks very much like map 101. And you can see in this instance, again, Councilmember, Mayor Kachiyadi and Councilmember Mahmoud are in the same district at the same time. And then, not finally, there's a couple of colors in addition to the odd ones. This keeps District 3 very much like it was in your current district, it's a north-south district, but it pushes the other two east and west. Again, you can see in this instance, Councilmember Donovan and Primuth, Mayor Pro Tem Donovan and Primuth, I got that wrong, Mayor Pro Tem Primuth and Councilmember Donovan, sorry about that. You guys got to stop moving around.
Call me John.
Are in the same district. But you can see where the adjustments have been made. Again, the renter issue doesn't go up, Councilmembers Nymer into the northwest, but it does go down into the bottom area. It's 6 and 1 half a dozen the other, people were trying to pay attention to what you represented. I want to hearken back to that first phrase, the first slide. You really can't get all of this stuff, it's like a Rubik's Cube, perfect, and balance the population, it's incredibly difficult to do that. So in many instances, you take the feedback, you try and get the representation, and then you have to nip and tuck where you can, where it makes sense. Okay? There's two more, there are colored maps. In this instance, the teal map, again, 8.36, I'm going to get it right here, Mayor Pro Tem Primuth and Donovan are in the same district. Again, it's that north-south in the center. I'm just looking at this, I'm not sure that the numbering was, yeah, it does. 2 and 3 have a little bit of a screwy situation, but you can see where 1 pulls over into the east a little bit more and pushes District 2 down. And you'll see that little box area in District 4 popping out near Oxley, that's simply, those kind of things are done for population balance. You have to make sure that the districts are close in population. And then finally, the green map, which got a lot of attention as well, 7.38 deviation. Each council member is into a separate district here. What really in effect, 105A and this one, they in essence take 2 and 3 and make them from vertical districts to horizontal, or instead of up and down, they're blocked up north and south. But again, Councilmembers Nymer, this pushes the renters on the west side there, and Mayor Pro Tem, District 3, is pushed down below. So those are the maps. Again, these are all good maps, they're compact maps, they take into account a lot of the feedback we heard from you and from the community. I know we have some community input, despite there was no public comment. It is really up to you. I'm happy to answer questions about the process and what we're looking for, but it's up to you to figure out where you want to go with this, that'll stay with the city for the next 10 years. I think that's, yeah.
Council, any questions for Ken Chalkins? Before I open the public comment portion of the item. Ken, no questions at this point? So I'll officially open the public comment portion, public hearing? Sorry, thanks. Public hearing is now open? Thank you. Is there any public comment?
If you would like to make a public comment and you're on Zoom, please raise your hand now if you're calling in, that is *9.
Again, if you're just listening in, we're on item number 15, the public hearing, receiving public input right now regarding boundaries for South Pasadena City Council districts. So right now, it's the public hearing portion of this item. So you have about another minute or so to call in with any comments. We've received a lot of information. Kristina, I noticed we got a bunch of written comments today.
We did receive eight written comments, and those are posted online in the additional documents.
Thank you, we've had a chance to look at those. Anybody call in yet or raise your hand?
There are hands raised. We can begin if you'd like, Mayor.
Please, thank you, Kristina.
We have five hands raised at this time.
Great.
Let's begin with Yvonne LaRose.
Yvonne, welcome, and you have three minutes.
I hope I won't overblow my time. For the sake of efficiency, I'm going to, I think I have clarification questions more than anything else, and I just want to be certain. South Pasadena operates on the representative government model, and each citizen has a say in how they are governed. This is my present understanding, and there is equal representation of the population, or at least that's the goal. Now, I remember in aggregating some of the past meetings, it came out that there is a 3% underserved population, and I'm just wondering how they can be certain that they are going to be heard, for the lack of a better word. And that's the end of questions.
Yvonne, continue with all your public comment, and we'll try to address the questions after.
I'm sorry, say it again.
Is that the end of your public comment, or do you want to finish up?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Yes, it is.
Did anybody understand that question? She said there's 3% of the public underrepresented, I wasn't sure I followed.
She said underserved.
Underserved, okay.
Underserved, but which district?
Yvonne, one last question. Can you identify which district you're talking about that you say is underserved?
Well, I remember from our past meetings, the Asian population is something like 40%, and then we moved down to those who are identified as black, and that represents 3% of the entire city's population.
That's correct.
Okay.
And so I'm concerned about that population and their needs and wants being served and heard, heard and served, and how can we accommodate that? You know, based on the feedback that came out during the mural discussion, it sounds like each representative is doing due diligence to make certain of certain things, but I just, for the sake of me and others like me who are in these lower population demographics, I'd like to be sure that their interests, their voices are being heard.
Well, thanks, Yvonne, we'll hear from the expert. Ken's been in many cities.
Yeah. The issue is with that low of a number, it would be hard to create a district where you would have electoral potential. It doesn't mean African-American couldn't get elected in a council district. The person who is representing that district where you live is the person responsible for your governance, for representing your interests. When the numbers get more significant overall, at that point, if you see a line that is drawn in a district that splits that district, if they in fact live in a certain area, there are some cities where you have protected classes where they live across the entire city, and you can't legitimately draw a district because you would then be gerrymandering, right? And so when the numbers get up to a certain point, again, the law doesn't say a percentage, it doesn't give you a target, and it doesn't guarantee a seat. But if you start to get overall a population of 35, 40, 45% in the whole city, and there's a collection of that community in an area, you've got to start to look at creating a district where that has the potential to elect, for example, in South Pasadena, an Asian person at the table, which has happened in the past in South Pasadena, at large and, you know, at large. So, I mean, that's the issue. If the numbers are small, it's hard to make the argument, and the only person who would represent would be the councilperson who's representing where you live.
Thank you, Ken. Staff, any comments at all? Then we'll move on to the next public comment. Thank you, Yvonne, for that question.
Next is Ann Bagasaw, go ahead.
Ann, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. First of all, I'd like to thank the consultants and the staff who worked on this. I have a deep appreciation for rock star demographer Ken Chalkins, and now I think that's what I want to do in my next life. I've looked at these numbers for many hours. I have a deep respect for this process, and I'm privileged to be so intimately involved with the preservation and the effort to perfect democracy in our city. I'm one of those rare birds in South Pasadena who supports redistricting because it ensures that those elected to govern our city are not from one class or the same neighborhood or the same club. It forces the issue of equal representation of all segments of our population. Thanks to redistricting, more people have had the opportunity to run for council and serve. As we witnessed in the last election, we had multiple candidates running for office, all very different individuals with a variety of approaches to governing and ideologies. Some were renters, some were women, some were people of color. It was magnificent to experience. That being said, there was one thing that these diverse candidates had in common, and that was a universal love for South Pasadena. Yes, we are many, but we are all leaves of the same tree, and at the end of the day, rich or poor, Asian, Hispanic, black or white, renter or homeowner, we all come home to the same place. We are one community of interest, made up of many types of people and families. But to carve out one community geographically, given that we are such a small city, is not in the spirit of the law. It looks more like segregation. Map 105A is a perfect balancing of our community of interests, creating equal representation by all those who serve. A councilperson from D4 will have to be as accountable to renters as is a councilperson in District 5. The councilperson in District 2 will have to be as accountable to the various groups that make up our Asian population, as does a councilperson in District 1. The only way to truly strive to have any community of interest wholly represented is to implement map 105A. South Pasadena Tenants Union, on behalf of the community of South Pasadena renters and low-income households, endorses map 105A and urges the council to adopt this map to establish the new districts for our city. Thank you so much, good night.
Thanks, Ann, for looking at those numbers for nine hours. Next?
Next is John Shaballas, go ahead.
Welcome, John.
Hello, good evening, Mayor and Council, and thank you, Ken. I'm calling in support of public map 105A. I believe this map best balances political, economic, and racial considerations. It also hews closest to the intent of the California Voters Rights Act in that it gives a fair voice to low-income residents, renters, and people of color. Map 105A achieves equal distribution of race, income level, and rent-own status. This balance means the entire council must be responsive to the needs of those across each spectrum. Some of the other maps create three districts with larger blocks of white and affluent residents. This means low-income residents, renters, and people of color are concentrated in two districts, and these folks' concerns are outweighed 3 to 2. This is not what state law intended. I don't think anyone on either side of the dais finds fairness in the creation of two districts with less than 18% low income, when lines can be drawn so that all five districts have between 18 and 24%. Nor do we want renters packed into two districts. Map 105A distributes residents so that the aforementioned communities of interest have nearly equal representation across all five districts. 105A is the most democratic of the options. Please adopt map 105A. Thank you very much.
Thanks, John.
Next is Josh, go ahead.
Is he on mute, or can we hear him? Sorry, sorry, I am on unmute, unmute, unmute. I am unmuted now. Okay, everybody's talking about 105A. I want to point out how bad the teal map is, and how if you go from Mound Street through central South Pasadena next to the library, you have about four different council districts going through that area, and it just completely chops up the middle part of the city, and I am strongly against teal. One of the things that I've always said is that Monterey Hills should have its own representatives. I think 105A is a good starting point. The only complaint I have about 105A is that with Monterey Street, it is one of the busiest streets through South Pasadena, and I live right north of Monterey Street, and I don't think people who live north of Monterey Street ever cross Monterey Street to go to south Monterey Street because of how busy it is. And if you look at 105A, you have a chunk of green going above Monterey Street, you know, I believe that that should be moved around and given to 2 in some way, shape, or form, or trades should be made with 1, 2, and 3, so that 2 has more of the Monterey Hills, and 1 has more of the above-the-Monterey area, because that little chunk of green above Monterey between near Indiana Street, it's on an island, and I don't think the people who live in those areas would actually feel they're represented by the person who lives south of Monterey. That is all.
Thank you, Josh.
Next is Joanne Knuckles. Go ahead.
Welcome, Joanne.
Hello, everybody. Thank you for, hi, Michael. Thank you for listening. I want to keep this short. I support MAP 105A. I've been doing some studying, talked to Ken today. And that makes the most sense geographically and given the situation and demographically also. As a second choice, but not as favorable, is the green map. Now, my next comment is about district, in general, district representation. It was something that was forced on us and for a small city like South Pasadena, I don't think it works. You're forced into it by, for the election, but as far as governing, I think that all council people, despite the district you may represent, we should govern as a whole like we did before, each council person, representing the whole city. And when you look at the agendas, that's what you're dealing with. So I'm hoping that the districts are only for purposes of election and governing is, governing the whole city, similar to the comments of Ann Bagasal. Thank you.
Thanks, Joanne.
Hi, Mayor. We did have one addition for a live public comment. Is that okay?
Please, yes, Chris.
Sam Bridges?
Sam, Sam's here in the council chambers. They're welcome, Sam. Go ahead.
Good evening. I just want to get some clarification. I'm probably the only one in the city that doesn't quite understand it. It's really two parts. One map shows that Councilman Mahmoud and Councilman Caciotti will be in the same district, which means that they will run against each other and then other people will run in that other district. The other one, I think it was two maps, show that Councilman Donovan, Councilman Premuth will be running against each other, but their terms are not up until 2024. So if you choose one of those two maps, what will happen in 2022? Will there be an election for those districts? How does that work?
Sam, is that your only question or so?
Yeah.
Okay, have a seat and Ken will answer it. Thanks, Sam.
Yeah, it's a, it's a good question. If you're in the same district in 2022 and you're both up in 2022, the vacant seat will have to be up in 2022 as well. Somebody will win in the paired district. And then you'll have, the idea is to have the alternating seats not change at the dais here. So when you pick your selection, you try and make sure, you have to make sure that that happens. If they're in the 2024, you wait until 2024 and the same dynamic happens, right? The, the real challenge is if you're in two different election cycles, 2022 and 2024, right? What happens to, in that situation? And in that situation, if you pick the 2022, the 2024 person has a choice. They can run in 2022 against the 2022 person and see what happens. Or they can wait and then they can serve their term to 2024 and then they're out, right? And the flip is, is exactly the same. If you wait until 2024, 2022 can wait. They leave their term in 2022. They can run again, but not as an incumbent. They have to wait two years in that district. So it gets a lot more complicated. In this situation, it's not too complicated because you have people on this, in the same year. But what will happen is someone will run in the vacant seat. People will run in the vacant seat and the two people competing, that are paired, will run against each other. It just so happens they're in the same year.
Last one, Sam. Go ahead.
I'm sorry, I meant both Councilman Premuth and Councilman Donovan are not up for reelection until 2024.
Right. So they would represent in that district till 2024, right? And then in 2024, they run against each other to represent the district that they're now in. Not, not now currently, that they have been drawn into. Yeah. You, you get them elected at large and to represent and then in 2024, they decide whether they're going to be elected by district. And believe it or not, it's relatively simple here. It gets a lot more complicated in other places, but, so, I hope that helps.
Christine, do we have any more hands raised?
No, Mayor, we do not and we have no public comment cards.
Thank you. I'll close the public comment portion. Thank you very much. Public hearing. Now let's... City manager, staff, what is our next duty right now? To choose a map? Tough part, the tough part. Do you, do you want to, like, last time you want to cancel some maps out first? Do you want to do that first? John, what are your thoughts? Or Evelyn? Anybody can go ahead first.
Oh, we can, we can ask Ken to put the, the most selected map was, well, we can go through it.
Okay. Ken, you want to maybe, you want to maybe, some maps we can get rid of now so we narrow it down?
Right.
If you want. There's also the interactive map tool. If you want to draw down or drill down into maps, it's up. I can drill down into a map to see city, city level. We did this at the last time, last meeting online. Or not. It's up to you. What's the question you have?
I think, let's start with the one community of interest that I think everyone has identified. And that is the Asian-American population. And that tends to be in the Monterey Hills area. And we have maps that are completely inclusive of an area that I think is very, very high in Asian population. And then cer- certain maps have more of a split. The current population, I think the district with the highest Asian population right now is 48% and that's District 1. So the question would be, do we want to adopt any maps that would create a district with an Asian population below 48, 47%? Because that would be, I, Ken, would you, would you agree with me that if we created a district that had something like about 47, 48%, we would not be splitting a community of interest?
Not directly. I wouldn't agree directly. I, I get where you're going, the logic. What ends up happening is, again, you could start to get focused on a number.
Correct.
And, and by the way, various protected classes, over, over a lot of research and study, perform differently. So a Latino community would have a better chance of getting elected if they had 55 or 60. An Asian community has shown high 30s and 40s starts to perform better. And this is, these are general rules. South Pass could be completely different. My point is, is a district that has 40, significant, if you picked one that had 37, could somebody say, hey, wait a second, that map over there had 40, you diluted the potential? Probably not. If you took an area where there's 40 and you drew a map and you split 20 and 20 or you put, you know, 50% in 1 and 50 in, that would be a clear example of dilution.
Right.
Of cracking is what they call it. So the long answer is not necessarily.
So let me do another overlay of the same area, and that is the, the hills, which tend to have a very, you know, a, a set of very similar concerns: traffic, construction.
Yep.
P foul. And, and, and then the question.
Fire.
posed to the council is.
Yeah, fire.
Is it, is it better to have one representative for that area or two potentially, who have significant interests in that area? So that, you know, you, you have two council members with an ear to that particular geographic area.
Are you looking at a particular map, by the way?
I'm looking at, no, I'm just looking at District 1, which is generally the hills area, the Monterey Hills area.
Let's look at 105.
With various.
Okay.
Variations on the east side.
Yep.
I don't think any of the major variations reduce the Asian population below 47%.
No, you can, that's right.
It does divide either at Indiana or Villa Del Rey, the community into two. And I think the community would feel like they're together, even though there are, those are the major arterials. But at the same time, if, if the council thought that it would be good to have two council members with interests in the hills, Monterey Hills area, one of those maps that actually has a Villa Del Rey dividing point would, would be something that we could consider.
Yep. That, that, you're, you're doing the layering, which is important, and that's the question you have. I, I think this came up last time and I believe Mayor Protem, you brought it up. You can cut that both ways. You could have a community that says, I want to go to two people and I want two voices there. By population, it dilutes, in this case, east and west, you know, of the hill. Or you could say, no, no, I want it all concentrated. I want one person to go to because I want that person responsible for my issues. It's the logic set that you all have to come up with. It, it, you're, you're asking absolutely the right question. And I, by the way, would really appreciate and commend you. Most people just get focused on, focused on the protected class. You've done renters, socioeconomic, fire. You've looked at a lot of different layers. And that's, that's what makes this complicated.
My third question has to do with commercial areas. The, the teal map that one of the public comments was very critical of puts four council members in what I would think is one of the main walkable commercial streets of the, of the city, and that's Mission, Mission Street. I tend to think that's a, that's a good thing. Because then you have four, four council members who are interested in, you know, a go-to place for entertainment and there's going to be a lot of development interest along Mission. And then some of the maps put at least three council members with an interest on the Fair Oaks corridor, which I think is also good. So I, I would say, throw out, throw out to my colleagues, whether the teal map, at least in its allocation of interests along Mission, is a good idea. Or most, a lot of the maps have the entire stretch of Mission from Fair Oaks to Arroyo, mostly in District 2 or 1 district.
Let me, let me address that briefly. Before the Fair Maps Act, which is when you drew your current districts, that logic set held because you weren't looking at communities of interest of voters or neighborhoods of voters. I, I think I mentioned this last time. The city of Pasadena has a similar logic. They want every council member to touch Colorado Boulevard, right? And, and so they have skin in the game. The issue is they're not, you're not talking about voters then. You're talking about commercial interests, right? And so that's why you have those two slivers down the middle right now because you have those two that really connect to Fair Oaks. In this case, the community of interest, the voters aren't on Fair Oaks or Monterey. The voters are east and west of, or north and south of those streets. So I, I appreciate the logic and I think Councilwoman Mahmoud, you brought this up. Wouldn't it be great if we could all have a piece of a commercial district, right? It, it's a logic that makes sense in governance. But from the fair maps perspective, it doesn't necessarily hold as strong. If you could do both, Mayor Protem, if you could get communities and get connectivity, then you'd have an ideal situation. But, so it, it, it's a little different now than it was in 2017, I think, when you drew your maps. It doesn't mean that teal is not a good map, by the way. I mean, that, these are, like I said, these are all strong maps, but...
No, I, I've been looking hard at, at teal because I, I am attracted to the idea of, of being invested in the commercial district. But I, without, without.
Right.
Creating a problem for any, any of the communities of interest.
Yeah, you're not mitigating.
And, and I don't, I don't think there's, I think a tweak on a teal map could, could work. But that's just my opinion. I don't want to deep dive into it because I know my colleagues probably have some ideas too.
Good comment, so.
Evelyn, I mean, Diana, please.
I agree with Mayor Protem that even though they aren't of recognizable interest under the California Voting Rights Act, I do think that our business, that having each district, to the, to the maximum extent possible, have skin in the game with regard to commercial development devolves to the ultimate benefit of our residents because it's economic development. It's walkability. It's, so it's revenues to fund our general fund. And it's also, we know from many surveys that the city's walkability is huge and the ability to go to various things. And so that does kind of circle back into voter interest.
I should note that the teal map, if you'll recall, was a version of the blue map, which was very, very popular, but was population unbalanced. So we adjusted it. That was the first iteration of maps.
Councilmember Mahmoud, any more comments at this point?
Not right now. Thank you.
I, I have a quick comment.
Go on.
Ken, I've made a few little tweaks to the teal map. I've got little arrows and I think everyone gives and gets. If I showed you this, could you give me your feedback on what, how, how hard it would be?
How hard it would be to make the tweaks? We could certainly make the tweaks. The question is, I can't on the fly tell you what the numbers would change.
I understand.
And that would delay you. If you're not going to pick the map tonight, you can't pick a map plus the amendments unless they are immaterial. They're, you know, administrative adjustments. You'd have to come back to another meeting.
Can you tell me?
What's the question? Tell you what? Whether they're immaterial?
Yeah, I, I, so, you know, I'm, I'm, I apologize if I'm getting a little late in this.
That's okay.
I know the teal map's been.
I have the teal map up and I'm happy to drill down to an area if you want to.
Well, I have, I have a number of small changes. But what I'm going to do is, if, if you're, if you're able to look at these changes and tell me that, yeah, this might work theoretically, then I might, that might affect whether I want to move forward tonight. If you look at it and say, you know, I think this is just too late, too, too much, then I'm happy to go with, in another direction. Hate to put you on the spot, but you're.
Well, it's not my, I mean, it's really, it's not my decision, it's yours because it's a timing issue.
All right, so.
The answer is if you are changing the map.
Yes.
In, in a way that is going to move populations, number one, I can't, I don't, I don't know the census blocks. So I don't know how many people you're moving and I don't know how many people, other, other people are moved to accommodate that.
Right.
We would have to run through the numbers. I have no doubt that we could pinch and tuck and make it work and keep the essence of teal. We, we, that's what we did with 105A and 103A. We could do that. I don't know what the numbers would look like and I don't know where the pinching and tucking would come, at, at what expense. The, the challenge I have is if we come back and somebody says, whoa, wait a second, I don't really like that one.
Yep.
You pinched over here and that's not right.
All right, so.
My renters are over there.
There's a significant probability it's too, it's, it's maybe too, too late and it might be too much.
Okay.
Okay.
With that caveat, I'm happy to look at it, but I, but I can't calculate it right now.
No, I understand. I just don't want to put, yeah. So I'm just running through all my ideas. I, I do want to let my colleagues jump in here.
Councilmembers, what are your thoughts on the different maps?
Well, I would like to bring in 105A first and then the green map and see, because these are what the residents have pointed out that, and they've, they've studied it. So I wanted to address this with, oh, Ken.
Yep. What about him?
105A.
It's up there right now.
Okay.
And, and in this picture, you can't see what it was before. When we showed it in your PowerPoint, you can see that, that thing that was sticking out from District 3 is no longer there.
Right.
And to, yeah, please.
And so I gave up, at the present map, I gave up that little squiggle that goes up from Mission North to, of Arroyo Drive. But then what am I gaining because I lost that one? And I also noticed that I'm losing La Portada where the Beliki Tower is. And why can't I have that and take out?
Here's, here's what you're losing.
Yes.
And up here. And the answer is population balance. It's, it's simply population balance. You did gain here.
Oh, that's what I'd like to take out and bring back my Beliki.
Well, so you want to go back to the map that looks like yours. The problem is, as we call the ripple effect, if we did that, it would change District 2 and District 3.
I see. I get it.
And so you'd have to, you'd end up, you know what? This happens. You'd end up recreating your current map.
Correct.
Everything moves around in a circle.
Correct.
But that you just laid into it, this area up here needed to get to 2.
Right.
Because this area changed here, this, and you can see this area had to go to 3.
I do understand. I don't know if the other council members have comments on 105A.
105A has some voter deferral. The, the area south of the Huntington Bend or east-south of the Huntington Bend that moves from District 5 to District 3 has voter deferral.
Yeah. Then voter deferral, thank you for bringing it up. It, it comes up all the time. It comes up all the time. It is almost impossible to avoid, to the extent that you... The only way you wouldn't avoid it is if you move people from a 2022 to a 2022. That's where you avoid it. But in almost every jurisdiction I've been in, you have voter deferral. And the way to manage it is to communicate to people and let them know what's happening. They've had to wait an extra couple of years to vote for somebody. It happens.
I think some of our maps don't have any.
Well, again, only if they've moved from the same year.
Correct.
Yeah, to the same year.
Correct. So green, I don't think has any.
Okay, now, you were specifically talking about 105A, John, right? And you were too, Evelyn?
Yeah, I was talking about 105A.
Yeah, so there's 105A.
I'd like 105A. I wanted to add, that's one of my favorites out of the...
Okay.
Two or three others.
I'm sorry, Councilman, you said 105A?
105A, I'm been leaning towards that one, and they both were mentioning it, and I thought it was time to pop in there.
Diana, what did you think about 105A? Just curious.
My concern is that... And Ken, I do have a question for you. So the delineation, the street that divides between 1 and 3 and 105A, is that Orange Grove?
Between 1 and 3, so let's drill down.
My concern is that it appears that all of the commercial aspect of Mission is in District 1.
So this is Indiana. Is that the street you're talking about?
The dividing between 1 and 3, that's Indiana?
Right, yes. 1 and 3 is here, so it's Indiana, and between 3 and 2 is Orange Grove.
So District 1 has all of the commercial on Mission.
You mean the blue?
That's District 2.
Yeah, so that's District 2.
That's 2.
District 3 has the southern side of it, but yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm looking at 105A.
I'm in 105A.
Did we switch numbers?
No.
Still 105A.
Well, on my printed copy, District 1 is pink.
Well, you're looking at colors?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm sorry. This is District 1? Is that your same District 1?
You changed the colors on me.
Yeah, sorry. I didn't change the colors.
When you say "commercial district," what street?
Mission.
All right, that's in blue.
That's District 2.
That's 2.
The one that we had in our packet had the wrong numbering.
Yeah.
Yeah, because...
The supplement numbers are different than the packet numbers.
I'm sorry.
Right.
They were supposed to be renumbered. They renumbered...
Right.
They're renumbered online. There's Monterey.
Oh, good God.
I don't have any on Indiana and Mission. There's no business there. They're all single-family homes.
We did have a bit of an issue when we renumbered, but...
See, our packet had the wrong numbers.
Okay.
So the supplement has the right, and he's going by the supplement, which is 2 is north of Mission.
Right. There it is. So Mission has District 2, 3, and 1, 2, and 3, and 4. 1, 2, 3, and 4.
We all touched Mission, right?
5 does not.
Oh, okay.
And remember, at the first hearing, you talked about the sort of north of Monterey, south of Monterey.
Yep.
And so you can see Districts 2, 3, 4, and 5 follow that. District 1, Councilmember Naimer, your issue is because you run into the city border.
Right.
You had to get population balance.
Right.
Diana, did you have...
I had printed them out.
Before. Before the...
Before the additional documents.
My apologies.
Because the reason I printed them out is, if you print them out from the agenda packet, you have so much more information because all of the detailed demographics is on it.
Yep.
You had a point about 105A.
Well, yeah, 105A, all of the commercial part of Mission is in 2. Every single bit.
You got your wish, John.
Yeah, and that gets back to the point. Does the council want to have multiple council members on Mission Street? You know, we have a lot of development ideas about Mission Street. We have slow-street concepts. We have development. We have, you know, the arena numbers and what it's going to do to zoning. We have the Gold Line Station there that will potentially give density bonuses, and all of that development, you know, is going to be in one district for that particular map.
Right.
And I understand commercial is not a primary consideration, but I think we've... All these maps, in my view, work on a community of interest perspective. So I think we can consider the commercial district, and that's why I'm looking at that.
Like I said, it makes sense.
Mr. Mayor? So there's been a little discussion here and some confusion about which maps we're looking at from two different packets, what was published. I've confirmed that the content of the maps is the same.
Correct.
It's the presentation of the... Of how it's presented with the legend and things around it, but the lines on the map remain the same. The content of the, you know, which district in its geographic scope has remained the same.
I think one of the other changes, Andrew, was that in the... From our packet we had, the number is different in the supplement that we just got today.
It's the numbering.
Numbered.
Right, the district numbers.
That's everything, you're right.
Correct. But as far as the content of the geographic areas, it's all remained the same, and so there has not been a new map posted in shortened time of what's required under the code.
Thank you. That's right.
So Councilmember Mahmood, you raised the issue of whether map 105A gives us the vested... Gives enough council members an interest in the commercial district and all of its potential issues.
It's... My concern is, that's the heart. I mean, when people think of South Pasadena, I think they think of Mission, and that's a real concern.
Well, I know the Fair Oaks merchants would tend to disagree.
Yeah.
They sometimes feel neglected, and we have to make sure we balance that out. But I understand your point.
But we've got, as you said, there's merchants on Huntington Drive, a lot of merchants starting over there with all this new development, or maybe more. Fair Oaks, all up and down Fair Oaks, even south of Monterey Road, we've got the new pavilions there, maybe more commercial. Even in the area by the Ostrich Farm, could be massive commercial development. So it's no longer Mission Street-specific plan. It's our downtown-a-plan because it's more than just Mission Street.
Well, actually, there are businesses on the south side of Monterey leading to the freeway. There is like the coffee shop, Morrow &amp; Holman.
Right.
There are...
The Ostrich Farm area, I said, yes.
Correct, yeah.
Yeah, it's a lot there.
Yeah, no, there's commercials scattered, I mean, in many pockets around the city, but I just raised the issue of Mission because I think we've seen... We've had a lot of...
There seems to be... There's two concentrated areas of businesses in Mission, and then, once you get away from them, you've got the big gap in the middle, and you've got the big gap on the, I would say, in the west side of Mission, after you cross the railroad tracks.
Yeah, but business owners or businesses are not voters. The residents are the voters.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, I would just note that, sort of for a general plan or a specific plan or...
Right.
You're talking... That's sort of the language you're talking at this point. At this point, you're talking about elective representation from communities, and it's just a different conversation. It's not something that we normally do.
Right.
You do it every 10 years.
Evelyn, what are your thoughts on 105A?
Well, I like 105A because it is balanced.
Okay.
And the deviation is not that much. It's within.
Yep.
So I like 105A also, but I want to look at some other maps, see if Councilmember Primuth, I mean, Mayor Protem, Primuth and Diana would be happy. What about the green map? Because a lot of people spoke with that. Can we look at that for a minute?
From the last time.
Because I think three council members like 105A, but let's see if maybe we get more on the green map.
Again, this one's still... You can see Orient's north, south, and Monterey. The western district, Councilmember Naimer, still goes all the way up and even further up north. 3 has to poke over a little bit in the west, but... And 4 and 5 are separated closer to what they are today.
Councilmember Mahmood and Mayor Protem, what are your thoughts about the green map?
Green map has a little bit of voter deferral in that little extension between Fair Oaks and Huntington, where they squared out... Where they squared that little cutout.
Correct.
Which visually probably works, but, you know, it's one thing to think about. It has the same boundaries between 1 and 3 through the hills as the 105A map.
Yep.
It shifts the boundaries of District 3 in the center all the way over to Fair Oaks. In the 105A, the boundary is Fremont for District 3. I would say that the neighborhoods between Fremont and Fair Oaks, because they're such heavily-traveled arterials, those are actually natural boundaries, and it does make sense to use them. So either one, I think, makes sense. One other just point I'll just make is that in both maps, the South Meridian Corridor is represented by one district, and right now it's represented by 2. And we've had a lot of issues about Meridian Avenue and traffic, and I know the council's given direction, and there's been some work being done, and hopefully more work being done on that corridor. And that would go to one district as opposed to the current, which is 2. I think that's fine. In fact, I think one of the commenters who lives in that corridor thought this was a good... This was a good move. The one thing about 105 that, A, that looks strange to me is the little bump out for District 3. The green map looks a little more smooth.
You're talking about this area here?
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah.
You're showing 105... That was 105A, Ken?
Yeah, I just want to talk... See the bump out. It uses Fremont.
Right.
Instead of Fair Oaks. And 105... And green goes all the way over to Fair Oaks. It's just a... You called it exactly right, Mayor Protem. It's...
It was comparing both.
You're using one of two main streets as a barrier.
Right.
As a boundary, rather.
Right. And I think, yeah, I mean, for that... For the bump out that we were just looking at on 105A, the bump out east boundary at... I think that's Meridian. Is that Meridian? Is that what they're using? No.
On the east side, it's Fair Oaks.
Fair Oaks.
Oh, I'm sorry, on the green...
This is the bump out area right here.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was on 105A.
Yeah, no, I'm... We're in green, but if I did 105A...
It's the Indiana, I think, John.
Is that Indiana?
Oh, you're talking about on this side?
No, no, it's Orange Grove. Sorry, it's Orange Grove.
You sure it's not Fremont?
No, it's Orange Grove, the east side there of the bump out.
Oh, the bump out.
Yeah, so that comes... Stretches from Orange Grove Park down to Monterey. That kind of divides a neighborhood because, at that point, Orange Grove is just a very residential street.
I think in looking at green and 105A, one of the things I like about green is that District 2 goes all the way to Fair Oaks until Monterey in the green, whereas in 105A, it shifts to mound. And if you take the line south from Fair Oaks all the way to Monterey, as is the case in the green, then you can shift... You can eliminate some of this green bump out and then move some of what is presently What is presently divided by Fremont over to Fair Oaks. And so that, I think, helps to address the concern about the population, or at least a portion of the population, north of Monterey in 105A. And it also gives District 3 some commercial if at least some of that boundary is extended to Fair Oaks. And it gives... Well, it enhances District 2's commercial by going to Fair Oaks... By going all the way to Fair Oaks on the lower right portion.
Yeah. There's... I think it hits a domino, and there's something else that needs... There's going to need to move between 4 and 5. Those are the tweaks that I was trying to get on another map to get Ken to look at whether we would be, you know, it would be not feasible.
What you just described. So are you working off of green or 105?
105.
I'm making some adjustments to 105 based on...
105A?
105A.
105A based on green.
Okay. So again, if you would do that, you couldn't read the first ordinance tonight. You would push the timing beyond tonight because we'd have to go make those choice changes, and then you'd have to come back and look at the numbers and see how we did with that map. We call it sort of not... Well, it's a domino effect, you know? It's a ripple effect. You'd have to adjust in a lot of different places.
So to clarify, if there were a change requested tonight, you would make those changes, you would then post it on the website for the seven-day period?
Seven days before, yeah.
And then we would have a first reading. First reading could happen at a special meeting?
Can happen at a special meeting, yes.
And then second reading would have to happen at a regularly scheduled meeting, and I think our next regularly scheduled is April 6.
April 6.
And then the...
Then you run out of time.
All of this needs to be completed. Second reading needs to be completed by April 17. So we don't have another special meeting after that.
Another regularly scheduled meeting.
I'm sorry, yeah, regularly scheduled meeting for a second reading to happen.
Correct.
So as I'm looking at the calendar on this, I'm wondering if there is this time. So April 6 is our next regular meeting, seven days before. That's when second reading needs to happen.
Correct. So you need March 30. Is that seven days before?
We need five days before that for a special meeting. 1, 2, 3, 4, 5. So that's looking like the 31st. Seven days before that, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, is the 24th. So posting would have to happen no later than the 24th, and then a special meeting the following week.
Forgive me, Andrew, I think there's an issue. If you're 30 days to the deadline from April 17, I think that seven day turns into three days.
Oh, okay.
So that gives you a little bit more time. So after tomorrow, you would then... Then the posting has to be three days before the final decision.
Good point.
Okay? So you do have some time because you can call a special meeting whenever you want.
Right.
I know I'm giving Lucy conniptions over here, but I mean, you can do it. The issue I would ask you is, are the nibbles and adjustments, are they significant enough? Is that really what you're...
That's what I'm struggling with right now. I mean, if it's important enough, then we can call a special meeting. This is important. This sets our districts for the next... How many years?
10.
10 years? Okay, so let's get it... Let's see if we can... If we're at too granular level, and the council says, you know what? We don't want to do this, then we'll stick to this original timeline. If we're raising an issue that requires adjusting a map, then I would suggest that a special meeting makes sense.
Yep. And again, I would only highlight, you're talking about elections versus governance. I have no doubt that, you know, you're gonna get elected and you'll sit at the dais and you'll govern for the whole city of South Pasadena. And you're gonna represent your constituents if they have an issue with a stop sign or whatever, you know, a street traffic, something significant in your area. But you're gonna govern at the dais for South Pasadena. It's the beauty of having a small jurisdiction in this regard. But if that election is really significant in that area you're trying to talk, you're talking about it, represents a district that you think is being split or changed or adjusted, then by all means, it's as serious as changing a map. You have the unfortunate situation if you got a lot of good maps here.
So one of the issues I'm thinking about is voter confusion. You know, and as I look at the boundary of 1 and 3 going through the hills, you have Indiana, La Portada.
Which map are you looking at, John?
I'm sorry, 105A and Teal. I'm sorry, 105A and Teal, and green.
And green.
You have Indiana, La Portada. Then you have, it jogs over to Villa del Rey. And it takes that street that cuts over to Alpha, is that Camino Lindo? No?
If you'll tell me where.
Then it follows Alpha all the way down to the southern boundary. You know, those aren't necessarily major streets that divide, that divide neighborhoods at all.
They're mainly, they're mainly Asian, Chinese.
Yes. If you compare that to Teal, Teal takes Villa del Rey as its major dividing point. And then when it takes the jog, I think it's Camino Lindo to Alpha, maybe I'm wrong.
Teal is a significantly different map because it pushes District 3 way up.
Florist Oro.
You mean, you mean green?
Yeah, Florist Oro.
Takes Florist Oro over to, to. I'm talking about Teal. That, I'm just talking about that boundary making a little more sense because they are more heavily traveled arterial roads. So it has more of a sense of geographic separateness. Although, I don't know if it's all that significant.
If communities are on both sides of the street.
And they're already, in the current, in the current setup, they're already into separate districts.
So again, the outlines here are the current seats.
Are the current seats. Right.
But then it cuts down, it eliminates my renters.
The difference, John, between Fremont and Fair Oaks on the, I think, the area you're talking about, I don't think it's that significant. I think there's a.
Which, which map?
Okay, I'm looking at the Teal. The Teal is the one you're talking about.
That's what's up right now.
Yeah, the Teal is the one you're talking about, right? I was thinking you wanted to keep the boundaries. You thought Fair Oaks was one boundary, that was okay. And you also mentioned Fremont was the other. I'm just saying, if you move, if you try to get the difference between Fremont and Fair Oaks right now, I'm talking about residential voters, a population, there really isn't that much in that corridor. When you get down towards Mission, you know, you got the gas station.
Right, right.
City Hall, et cetera. And you go further north, you, there's only a couple of streets. I'm looking at the Teal.
Which district are you talking about?
We're talking about District 3, correct, John? And 2.
Right, so you're referring to the, to the point about whether District 3 has a eastern district boundary of Fremont versus Fair Oaks. Your point is there's not much difference in terms of population.
Yeah, I mean, if you think, think now where the freeway is and then come south. There's only, it's not very densely populated.
Yeah, I think that's a fair point.
Going from Gavalia and heading all the way down to Mission.
Hope and Magnolia, right? I think it's Hope and Magnolia, the streets?
That's another good point. The map also doesn't, it's not the territory, it doesn't tell you the numbers.
Yeah.
The density of where people live.
But what I don't like about the Teal is I'm losing 40% of my renters.
I don't know how you determine that because there's an awful lot of renters on Meridian and west of Meridian. On, to the extent that it's not commercial, there's multiple multifamily.
Were you, okay, I think Evelyn was opposed to Teal. Are you supporting it or not? I mean, I don't, I don't know where you're coming from, Diane. Are you saying that?
I like Teal because I do agree with Councilmember Primuth. I do have concerns regarding voter confusion, which, which district they're in. Because it, I, I can't tell by looking at 105A what those streets are. I really don't know. And it does, Teal does offer the, the greater exposure to commercial. And they're just simpler to understand. The districts themselves are simpler to understand.
Right, and well, another point is 105A does have, you know, a fair chunk of voter deferral. And it runs down, south of Huntington, the border of 3 runs down a very residential street. It's not, it's not Fremont.
The border of 3, the border of 3 is Fremont.
Oh, that's right. It does run down Fremont. But there, that whole chunk is a voter deferral area.
This area here.
Yeah.
I'll also add that with respect to 105A and Teal, with regard to residents within the lower 2 tiers of income, the dispersal is almost identical in terms of the numbers. They just move around among districts. But for example, for the lowest income, 0 to 25, the representation is 13, 6, 12, 11, 9 in 105A. In Teal, it's 6, 13, 12, 11, and 8. With regard to the income 25 to 50 in 105A, it's 10, 11, 7, 12, 15. In Teal, it's 9, 9, 11, 12, 15. So at least with respect to the moderate, it's a, it's a better dispersal of residents within that income range. But they're both close. That I don't see a definite preference between one and the other based on income because to me, they're, they're too close.
I'm gonna do my hail Mary and talk to you, Ken. If I can show you something.
Sure. If you come up with an even number or another color, I'm not looking.
Mayor, can we take a 5-minute break?
What are your thoughts, Harmony, is that okay? Andrew, can we do it at this point in the middle of a hearing?
Yes, you can.
Okay, we'll take a 5-minute break while they converse. Are you done, John?
No, 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 I suggested you, he vote on the 5-minute break.
I left, I left my diagram with.
Okay, we'll take a 5-minute break and be right back. Thank you.
Testing, welcome back everyone to the South Pasadena City Council meeting. And we're at item number 15, receiving input and making decisions on boundaries for South Pasadena City Council districts. Councilmember Primm, did you have, I mean Mayor Protam, did you have a chance to talk with Ken? Ken, you want to?
You want to talk about what you're proposing?
Yeah, I have a set of reciprocal exchanges on the teal map that does not involve splitting communities of interest, that involves, I think, a little harder definition of boundaries based on arterial streets. And I think there would be population balancing if all those reciprocal swaps can be made. I presented it to Mr. Chalkins. Are you Dr. Chalkins?
No.
Oh, okay.
My wife is Dr. Chalkins.
Yeah, well, you are for us. You're diagnosing and prescribing to us. I presented it to Mr. Chalkins, and he thought it's theoretically possible. So I'd like to throw it out to the council for consideration whether we could have a modification of the teal map with the reciprocal swaps I've proposed to Mr. Chalkins and come back at a special meeting. If it doesn't work, we can go to one of the other maps, which a number of council members have already said is perfectly acceptable. So I don't think this would be a long, drawn-out special meeting. It would be just for the purpose of this accommodation to me, and if it doesn't work, I'll buy you all pizza.
That's incentive to not make it work.
So I don't mean to be flippant about this, but really, I'm driven by two things. One, there is a very somewhat artificial and doesn't feel right eastern, western boundary of District 3 running through the hills on map, on both the green map and the 105A map.
Mayor Protam, can I just ask him to call up the interactive map so we can look at it?
Sure.
Okay. Oop, it's coming. There we go. Okay.
Right, so green and 105 share a western boundary of District 3, eastern boundary of District 1, that has a lot of, I think, what would feel to the community as very artificial placement of the boundary. The teal map has a lot more definition to it. It actually conforms, that particular boundary conforms to our existing district boundaries. And they've already understood that they're in a different district than the people across the street. So they've already had one whole election with settled expectations of being in a different council district. And that specifically is the Via Del Rey, Florist Oro jog over to Alpha, and Alpha all the way down to Kendall. That's a boundary that voters understand. That's the main attraction of teal to me, in addition to having Mission touch three or potentially four council districts, which I do think is a value, but maybe not everyone agrees with that. So within that, those two ideas, trying to make teal work would involve a set of reciprocal swaps that I do think would still create balanced districts in terms of demographics, District 1 would be able to retain the renters that are on the west and north side of District 1. That's part of the swap. And then if the swap, if the reciprocal swaps work, there would be no voter deferral whatsoever.
So did you want to? I would prefer that you would delineate the swaps here as best you could, so that it's publicly out, what you're proposing. The second thing I would suggest is trying to get rid of the other maps that don't make sense. So you've talked about green, 105, and now teal. If you could get rid of everything else, say we're not going to consider those, come back with a teal A. And like you said, if it doesn't work with the numbers and how it looks, then you've at least narrowed it down to the maps that have support.
Ken, so let's, I'm not sure how we're going to decide, but I'm not even sure what I want to do right now.
Right.
Let's get rid of some maps. We're down to two or three maximum.
Yep.
So let's start at number 101?
It's up to you all.
Let's do, let's just go down.
Very significant voter deferral for the Raymond, the entire Raymond, no, for, very significant voter deferral for the south, middle-south-east section of the city.
So is that a map that you don't want to consider for next time?
That would be a major reason for me to strike 101.
I agree to strike 101. Is that okay with everyone?
I agree.
I agree.
Yes, it also has, I think, the highest deviation of any of the maps.
Okay, great. What's next in line, 103A?
103A has no voter deferral that I can see. It conforms a lot to the existing boundaries, with the exception that 1 and 2, although I think we flipped those on 103A.
Again, this is the...
We did, yes, okay. Sorry, I'm looking at the other one. We have a natural boundary of Meridian Avenue between 2 and 3. That's a corridor. I think it's been good to have two representatives of that Meridian Avenue corridor, and 103A So I don't want to strike it right now.
Okay, I would strike 103A. The concentration of 2, that, the blue there, left, over left.
Sorry?
Yeah, other than the...
How did I do that?
Here, I got you. I'll take over.
Please.
Everything turned blue.
I just lost my doctorate.
Jack, I think that's a good point. It's a concentration.
Thank you.
Yeah, and that's, it's too big of a concentration. Other than the one point you brought up, that one street, I don't, Meridian, okay, would be a dividing line, Meridian would be a dividing line, I don't, I'm not in favor of 103A.
I'll...
What'd you say? No.
I'm in favor of striking 103A.
I agree to strike 103A?
That's fine.
Is that okay, everyone? Jack, you want to strike 103A?
Yeah, 103A, I'd like to strike.
So there's a majority, and John says okay. Diana, you okay? 103A?
If we wanted to avoid having a majority AAPI, that's one thing that is achieved by 103A. District 2 has a majority, 52% AAPI.
Total population or citizen voting age population?
Total population.
Right, so if you look at the citizen voting age population, it's lower, right? And again, there's not a target number, but you're correct. I don't have it by heart, but what's the citizen voting age? But again, that's, I would only say the other numbers in the other maps are significantly higher, I mean are high, as it were.
So, Jack, you're in favor of striking 103A?
Correct.
Evelyn, you too?
Yes.
Okay.
It struck.
It's gone.
Okay, all right.
What's next, Ken, 105 or 105A?
Well, 105A, I don't, you tell me.
Keep that, keep that for now.
I don't see that.
That's in the running.
I'd like to keep 105A.
Good, me too.
Yep.
Evelyn, you okay, 105A?
I'll keep 105A.
And Diana's okay with that?
And 107 would be the next one.
What about 107?
107 has significant voter deferral in the southeast section of the city.
I don't like 107As. I'm in 107, so I'll strike that.
It's worse than 103A.
I think you're right. I'll strike 107, Jack, is that's okay?
I'll strike 107, if I was unconcerned.
Okay, good. Ken, you got that 107 off the list?
109?
And that 109, Ken says?
I like 109. I don't mind the extreme northern and the extreme south. I got used to that. And it actually coheres, actually, that narrow step at the bottom seems artificial, but it's not. It actually does have very well-defined boundaries. And the deviation's not bad, but, you know, and there's only a small amount of voter deferral.
The big changes in this map are 1 and 2.
Say that again, Ken?
The big changes in this map are 1 and 2.
Right.
Districts 1 and 2.
Correct, yeah, mm-hmm. Exactly.
I'd like to keep 109 for future consideration. It's simple.
Okay, we're just going straight down here. I'm not in favor of 109, but let's see what everybody else has to say.
I'm not in favor of 109 because it eliminates my renters.
You would pick up an awful lot on Meridian, though.
Yeah, but they're, most of them are single-family homes.
No.
But I would be sharing Meridian with District 3.
Can we get a rundown on 109? I haven't seen that.
Is it, it's not in the packets?
It is?
It is.
In the packet, yeah.
Oh, God, okay. No, I mean, like, the detail of the demographic, the demographic spread.
I've got the demographics.
Oh, you do?
Yeah, what would you?
Oh, okay.
That's what I was going to say, 15-20.
But that means the deferral in my district, age 0 to 19, is 26%. That's an awful lot.
Say that again.
The age deferral for 109 in my District 1, age 0 to 19, it's 28% or 26%. So that's a whole lot for me.
Well, would it be proper to, if two of the council members whose districts are changing the most don't like it, I suppose we're not supposed to think like that. Is that right, Mr. Chalkins?
I can't tell you how to think, Mr. Mayor Protam.
Well, Evelyn, I would note that in 105, it's your 0 to 19 is 23% as opposed to 26%.
But I have more concentration of renters.
I, you know, we don't have demographics on that, but my recollection is that Meridian has a fair number of multifamily on it. They're not big, they're not big complexes, so they don't stand out, but there's, I think, quite a few. There's duplexes, there's some condominiums.
But what I'm after is the tangible results in the election in November 2020. 40% of the votes came from the renters, because, I mean, Jack and I have, share Pasadena Avenue, and there we discovered that one building, it actually goes all the way back, and sometimes you have 100 to 150 families living there in one building alone, so, and there are like two to three stories. So there's a concentration of renters on Pasadena Avenue.
So we have renumbered 109, correct, from the packet?
So what is depicted as 2 in the packet is, we've just flipped 1 and 2.
Okay, so here's a fact that may influence the council on 109. In one of the districts, basically the one covering the hills, 81% of the population lives in single-family housing stock.
Sorry, I was just...
No, I'm just, I'm just drawing that out, so, and that, I think, reinforces Evelyn's point.
Right.
And I think that might be a little bit of a disparity that we probably don't want to create.
So let's eliminate 109?
Yes.
Eliminate 109.
Yes.
Okay, so I think that leaves you with green, teal, 105.
105A?
105A, sorry. Green, teal, and 105A. Those are the three. Do both green and teal make the cut?
Yes. Well, green does for me.
Okay.
So let's start off, let's start off with green. Does green make the cut for everybody, or no? Evelyn, green?
I'm okay with green.
John, would that make one of the...
Green has the really somewhat arbitrary border between Districts 1 and 3 that has the, which is why, which is why, the same problem I'm seeing in 105A. But yes, if 105A is going to be in the mix, green should be in the mix.
I see greens in, Jack, green? Yes or no, one of the finals?
In another minute.
Well, Jack's thinking, Diana, is okay if green makes it to the finals?
Fine.
Diana says yes, that's four, Jack?
I've got to say no.
Okay, Jack says no for green. Okay, so green's four to one, goes in. Now we're with teal. That's the final one left, right, Ken?
Yep.
So so far, we've got 105A and green. Now it's teal. Evelyn, what do you think?
We haven't heard Mayor Protam's proposed tweaks, because I'm assuming that it would be as the Mayor Protam proposes for it to be modified, so I think it'd be appropriate now to hear those.
Ken, did you understand his tweaks? Do you want to explain those to us?
No, I...
I'll do it.
I agree with Councilwoman Mo, I think, I understood it here at the table.
Yep.
I think it's important to you to call it out. I'll write it down, and then we'll try and make it, and then that'll come back as well.
So let's just say teal could be in, but teal A would be, here'd be my proposal, starting on the western edge, a portion above Monterey and including Arroyo Drive would be moved into District 1.
So let's just, so this area here, yep?
Correct, a good chunk of that.
And that's the renters that the councilwoman is talking about?
Correct.
Right.
Is there a street that it would stop at, or just...
It's Mission and Arroyo Drive.
It's a pretty large census tract, but...
Okay.
Okay. Then in compensation, the area above Monterey and south of the gold line that follows the curve of the gold line...
That little square there.
Over to Meridian, kind of a triangular wedge.
So wait, here's Monterey?
Yep, Monterey, and trace it to, yeah, and then go...
Up.
Up that boundary.
Just here?
Up Meridian, yes, up Meridian.
Okay.
And then see that little diagonal? That's the gold line. No, trace it left.
There, oh.
Trace it left down, diagonally left.
Oh, I see, yeah, okay.
That's the triangle.
So this triangle?
Yes.
That triangle, actually, probably even more, all the way over to that railroad alley you see over there on the left, right at the, yeah, there you go, that triangular wedge would go into 1, I'm sorry, would go into 3. So District 3 would shift over to that chunk.
To District 3.
Correct.
So this triangle now becomes, now, be careful here, so this is, you're talking about this pink goes into 3?
Yes.
What happens above it?
Good ques, well, I think that's a well-defined, I think the railroad is a pretty well-defined boundary.
So what I'm saying is, so there's now, District 1 now is going to hook around...
Correct.
Now you're, you're pressing the bounds of what I'd call contiguity?
Well, then, then you can, you don't have to go the full wedge, then.
Okay.
It would be simpler to follow the alignment of the railroad.
It would. That's what I'm trying to do.
Okay, so it's not the lower part, it's an upper triangle, not a lower triangle.
Oh, I see. From Mission?
No, but then...
It's the lower triangle.
John wants the lower triangle, move up to 3.
Yeah, so that...
We can do it. I mean, actually, it's not pressing contiguity, because 2 touches 3, touches 1.
Right, and it doesn't have to go that far over.
You're going to have this little dangling part here.
It doesn't have to go that far over.
Okay.
So that's 1. Then there is an exchange between 1, I'm sorry...
4.
4 and 2.
Yeah, 4 and 2.
And 2.
So the box?
So it gets rid of the deferral, the box.
The box that's currently in 4.
That's correct. That's correct.
Goes to 2.
Goes to...
Right?
Correct, it goes to 2.
Is that right?
Yeah, I'm so sorry, I've got, I've got different numbers on mine, so I'm...
You may be looking at the older version, my apologies.
So we'll use your 2. So that box that is District 4, that sticks west of Fair Oaks, that becomes part of District...
2.
The central district, let's call it that.
Yeah, that, correct, it becomes just part of District 2.
Okay.
Then there is a segment of...
I think you talked about this little piece...
Yeah, that little piece there.
In 5, Pacific Alley.
Yeah, that is, that goes back to 4, it actually turns to 4.
Right.
And then in the...
How does, how does 5 get compensated for taking away that little...
Yeah, so that...
The corner of 2, that is extra, because that's actually voter...
This here?
That's voter deferral right there, that goes back to 5.
Yeah, so...
It goes back to 5?
What would you call this little area?
That is lower Fair Oaks.
North of Huntington.
She's north of Huntington, there's two streets, Spruce and Laurel.
Spruce, Laurel.
Stop at Laurel.
And, okay.
Goes back to D5.
Right. Now, the other possibility is to... Yeah, that's essentially what I have in mind, although I might have a slight refinement on that.
That's a slow-motion ripple, right? That's what's going on.
Did I miss any exchanges there?
No, I mean, so what I told Mayor Protam is that we could do this. What we would do is take it almost verbatim, look at the numbers, if it was above population deviation, we would slice a little bit of here, you know, we'd keep the essence of teal A, right? And we would try and slice a little bit and jiggle it a little bit. Micro liposuction, that's what the city manager told me. But kidding aside, that's what you have to do at this point, because if you don't, you end up spinning the wheel, and then you get big changes, and you just can't...
But it's got to be census tract micros.
I'll remind you, you are doing this well within the conversation about communities of interest, population deviation, compactness. You're doing it in the right space, as opposed to just numbers, which a lot of jurisdictions fall into, and so that's the right way to do it. You're up against time, so we can do this quickly and get you some maps to consider. Yes, Councilman?
Okay, go ahead. Okay, correct me, right now, we're down to 105A, we're down to the teal, am I missing one?
Green.
And green.
Green.
We also have, so we have 3 left, right?
Yes.
Okay, can I, can I make a proposal to go with one of them right now? Michael, is that, is that okay?
It's up to you.
If it goes through, fine. If it doesn't, we keep talking.
It's up to you, Jack.
Okay, I'd like to make a proposal that we go with, we go with...
For me, motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we go with 105A.
A second.
Hold on just a sec, let me just call it up here. Okay, sorry.
I've made a motion that we go with 105A, and Evelyn's second.
There's a second, any more discussion?
I have a question for Ken. Do you think that 105A could be tweaked in such a fashion as to provide the clear definition between districts? Because it's, the partition between 1 and 3 is very murky to me.
So, yes, we can tweak a lot. Again, note that we tend to look at these maps with streets. Streets in mind, the streets can make a difference, especially in this instance, you can use them as barriers if you want. But to the extent that communities go across streets, and communities of interest and neighborhoods go across streets, you can traverse them. It just so happens that when we're looking at a map, councilwoman, you tend to look, well, what is that street up there? I don't know. So the answer to your question is certainly, we could do exactly what the Mayor Protam just did on a lot of these maps, and you would get 105B. You'd get some version thereof. I'm not sure that it would, I'd have to ask you, where would you move the line? And then you'd be back into a micro ripple effect. I'm not dissuading you, I'm just telling you, we tend to look at streets, and that's not how the maps are drawn.
Thank you.
Let's call the roll. This is to move forward, Jack made a motion with map 105A for clarification, your second by Zinimer. Roll call.
Councilmember Zinimer?
Yes.
Councilmember Mahmood?
No.
Councilmember Donovan?
Yes.
Mayor Protam, Primmuth?
No.
Mayor Caciotti?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, so we are going to adopt 105A.
Yes.
Yep.
Thank you, Ken.
So just again, in recap, Ken, what happens next?
Well, you have to, I'm sorry, the city attorney, you have to actually pass the ordinance, the first reading of the ordinance. You've adopted the map officially.
Now we've got the whole item, item 15, right?
Correct.
So you've conducted a public hearing, reviewed the maps, have you chosen one? Now we need to read by title only, the first reading, waiving further reading, and introduce an ordinance designating a city election district map, which is 105A, under Elections Code, Sections 21600 through 21609. Is that correct, Andrew?
Correct.
Roll call, Andrew, is that okay?
Yes.
Roll call for that motion? Did I, so that would be my motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Zinimer. Roll call, please.
Can we have discussion?
Yes, please, John, sorry.
You know, I think we've already adopted a map, so the ordinance is simply per forma, is that correct?
Well, it's, no, you have to introduce this ordinance with that map attached.
I understand, but this is a logical consequence of us having adopted only one map?
Yes.